Miller, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mignon.
Here.
Mr. Francis. Mrs. Erwin Adams.
Here.
Mrs. McGinnis.
Here.
Mr. Cook. Mr. McCauley.
Here.
Mr. Romanowitz.
Here.
Mr. Pacifico. Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Here.
I can't hear what they're saying.
Yes, I'll just remind everybody when you speak tonight to please make sure you hit your microphone. Thanks. I'd like to announce that prior to the oops, we did have an executive session where we discussed some personnel matters. So we'll move on to number two on our agenda, a special presentation, the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program.
So just a clarification, we were just notified recently today that both of our students that have been recognized as National Merit finalists were not able to be here tonight, so we will be recognizing them in November. So we'll just move this recognition to November.
Okay, thanks. Do we have any citizens who wish to address the board? Okay, so please come up, share your name with us and where you're from and have at it.
My name is Zachariah Gerakio. I'm from Altoona, Pennsylvania. And came, this is for a school project for a dissonant project, and it was about, mine was about phones being allowed in school.
Step a little closer to the mic and have at it. We'll give you five minutes or less, you know.
So I got pros and cons for why phones should be allowed in school. One of the pros being if student is, a student or a teacher becomes, goes out and gets harmed whenever they're out and there's no phones around, they can have a lifeline there that can help them, and a con can be a distraction. Students above and beyond have been on their phones and they take their phones and they use it not responsibly. And a phone can be a lifeline for someone. I know that personally for my sister, Rihanna Gerakio. She was sexually assaulted and her phone was her lifeline because she had the ability to call someone and was able to talk to someone whenever she needed it most. And she went to school, she went to nurses, principals, counselors. They never got her help, but when she had her phone, she was able to talk to someone. And I feel like if she didn't have that, she would have ended up like Wyatt Lansbury. And that's why I think phones should be allowed in school. And also kids are most likely to charge their phones rather than their Chromebooks and they won't forget their Chromebooks. Yeah.
That it? Anything else?
No.
Well, thanks for having the courage to step up and speak to us. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address us? All right.
Follow up, Zach, I just want to appreciate your willingness to come in and speak to us tonight. I know a number of our students had reached out to board members and myself via email, but it's a different thing to get up in front of people and speak. So I want to thank you for your courage in doing so. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo what Brad says. We did get several emails from students like you and we addressed them all. We respond to everybody and we appreciate the input and the opportunity to learn from you students here doing the thing. So thanks again. It took some courage to step up here. So next on the agenda is under item four, we have minutes. I'll be seeking approval of the regular board meeting minutes from September 16th, 2024. And the whole meeting, the committee of the whole meeting, October 7th, 2024. So I will accept a motion to approve those minutes. Second, anyone?
Second.
Would anybody like to discuss any contents of these minutes? Okay. All right. All in favor of approving the minutes from both meetings, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? I say aye also. Minister approved. Okay, next we'll move to number five. Finance, we have list of payments. Athletics, use of facilities, Roosevelt Field. Hold on, my mouse isn't. The, our school district's athletic office is requesting the approval for the use of the Altoona area junior high school Roosevelt Field upon request from the National Autism Association. For the purpose of an autism walk, the walk is scheduled to be held on, well, it happened. It happened. So I guess we'll prove it retroactively. Agreement and coverage documents are attached, so we can feel comfortable that it went off without a hitch. Next, we have under C athletics, use of facilities, rental of Mansion Park. The school district athletic office is requesting approval to rent Mansion Park Stadium to the is that TOB Regions 11 on October 26th, 2024 in the amount of $1,300. It is for the purpose of the PA Marching Band Championships. Agreement and coverage documents were attached. And lastly, under finance, we have another external request, use of facilities of the Altoona area high school student commons. Administration recommends approving the requests from the Blair County Safe Schools Network to use Altoona area high school for the purpose of training on Friday, November 1st from 7:30 a.m. till noon. Fees have been waived. A certificate assurance of insurance will be provided. Seeking a motion to approve items five A through D.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just real brief, I just want to explain the lateness of the request on B. It was a last minute request. It was, the walk was in memory of Jack, the young student, autistic student that passed away from Learning Express that drowned earlier this summer. They were struggling to find a facility and they were willing to work with us on utilizing Roosevelt Field. So it was very last minute, but fortunately it had a beautiful day, had well over 100 people attend the walk and raise significant money for that, for that, for that cause. So thank you for the consideration. I apologize for the, for the retroactive request. And the last piece was the request of the facilities for the student commons. We attend quarterly safe schools meetings and at the last meeting, they were hoping to have a more regional meeting that the Blair County 911 office could not accommodate. So Officer Pepper and I decided that we would put ourselves out there and volunteer to host. The benefit is that we can have all of our staff present for the safe schools training, which is really going to be vital because we're looking to get some common language, not just here in Blair County, but regionally and really streamline some of our safe schools initiatives, especially our active shooter and crisis management response team. So I appreciate consideration for those requests.
I'm going to take this opportunity as I prepare for the meeting on a beautiful, warm day yesterday, reading pages of payments. I noticed that we made a lot of payments to cyber charter schools in this 30 day period. I think the total was nearly three quarters of a million dollars out of a total expenses of almost four and a half million or 16.6% of our expenses this month were paid to cyber charter schools, which is crazy. And I realize some of that was for a quarter. In some cases, it was for two months. But it was still a significant sum of money and I just wanted, it took me down a rabbit hole. So I started doing research and found that we have the most cyber charter schools of any state in the United States here in Pennsylvania, which I find alarming. Also noticed that most of them are in the east, Harrisburg or east, maybe one in Pittsburgh, and I think there's one locally here. So that means our money is leaving this community, this county and going east to support whatever out there. I won't name names of particular schools, but I did notice that the leadership of one of the larger schools is led by former leaders of the Department of Education, the state of Pennsylvania, which I find a bit I don't know if I would call it alarming, but I'm sure these guys left their careers, you know, not many people make lateral moves, so they, they, they move to better themselves and that's fine. But I think they also probably have some ability lobby and have connections in Harrisburg to continue to support what's going on now with the current state of cyber charter schools. So I just wanted to point that out again, because the number seems so large and it was such a large percentage of this month's expenses. I thought it was a good opportunity to shine the light on it again. So that's taxpayers' money leaving our area and going to the east and Brad also mentioned that we lose a lot of good educators to the cyber charter schools who are going out and leaving schools like ours and other school districts. And these are valuable and talented people who are now working from their homes instead of interacting with children in the schools where we really need them. So it's just a, it's a horrible situation that we're challenged with here in the state and I will, as long as I'm here, I will continue to expose it and shine a light on it. So that being said, we can move on to vote on approving these expenses. We didn't incur them, so we have to pay them. So all in favor of approving items five A through D, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to number six, which is policy. We have the first reading of several policies there. We met last Wednesday, I believe, and went over these, so I forget, do these need to be approved? First reading, okay. So you could see all the policies listed there. As I recall, most of these policies were just a result of changes in language with the Pennsylvania School Board Association recommendations, so nothing too crazy here. So that being said, I will ask for a motion to approve the first reading of all the policies listed there. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Would anybody like to discuss any of these policies? Okay, seeing no one interested in discussing them. All in favor of approving all the policies listed under items six A, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to seven, education. Administration, under, we have A through G. A is administration requests approval of the feminine hygiene products grant program. The funding allows schools to purchase menstrual products to make available to students at no cost, both at school and for take home use. AASD will receive $12,283.25 to be sent, to be spent prior to June 30th, 2025. We have an affiliation agreement between the school district and Slippery Rock. We have a letter of agreement. It reads administration requests the approval of the letter of agreement between Altoona area high, Altoona area school district and Ignite Education Solutions for Title I Services with Arrows Christian Academy to begin October 22nd, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, not to exceed $3,952. Under D, we have a list of volunteers to approve. Under E, we have a list of field trips to approve for the elementary program. Under F, we have secondary field trips to approve. And under G, we have a request of approval for the Altoona area junior high school summer school proposal for 2025. Looking for a motion to approve items A through G under number seven, education?
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Would anyone like to discuss any of these items?
Just real quick, for the kids at summer school, the ones that are failing, I guarantee you, most of them probably won't be able to pay the, pay the fee. I'm saying, I'm saying that 75 bucks may be a little, little steep.
That's, so during S R and COVID funding, there was no charge for summer school. This goes back to pre-COVID rates of $75 for, for, for students in junior high school needing summer school. They actually get all four main content areas. Again, we're not making, we're not making a profit on that, the amount that we have. And if we do have students that have a financial hardship, we address those individually.
So they'll be taken care of?
Absolutely. We address those individually. Yep. We would never keep someone out for a financial hardship. Thank you.
Can we, is Kelly able to vote? Are we able to hear her? Because I'm not, I just want to make sure. Do we know?
I'm, I'll speak up if I'm against something, unless you want me to unmute every time. It's up to you.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure that you were able to vote, but I can hear that you are and I know you'll speak up if you, if. All right. Hit your mic, please, Michael.
Is there a listing of those field trips for elementary school, what each school is going to be involved in, where they're going by chance?
That's all right. Okay. Seeking approval of items seven A through G. So all in favor of approving these items, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. We will move on to number eight, which includes personnel agenda items, which we all had the opportunity to read and the usual list of personnel items and then another piece related to the basketball league and all the event workers, the pay rates for this coming year. We also have contained the business manager contract of Ms. Franks. That'll be a roll call. Okay, so we'll carve that one out. We also have a proposal for the, the business office realignment. I'll read it. So the proposal, the, the business office reorganization would be Stacy Lovridge to become, to be the tax office manager. Job description updated to include responsibilities related to magisterial, magisterial district court appearances and management of delinquent accounts. Annual pay rate change from $71,080.30 to $75,000. Tracy Blattenberger, benefits coordinator. Job description updated to include responsibilities for health insurance billing. Additional segments of plan administration, detailed work with HSA's HRA plans and administration of open enrollment. God bless her. Annual pay rate change from $56,650 to $65,000. Brittany Columbo to be the assistant business manager and finance. Job description updated to include supervision of accounts payable activities and supervision of assistant computer operator. Annual pay rate change from $78,676.34 to $80,000. And a change of title, status classification. Mallory Haynesy from administrative assistant to purchasing coordinator. Job description updated to include requisition, approval, account level budget compliance, RFP and bid services. Annual pay rate change from $43,738.91 to $50,000. Next, we have security department salary adjustments. Security greeter unarmed 2024, 25 rate from $14.50 an hour to $16 an hour. Those would include William Crawford, Jordan Nova, Sal Scott Smith and Andrea Wibley. Secure, security greeter armed 2024, 25 rate from $15, $15.50 per hour to $17.50 per hour. That would include Robert Carterwood, Ayesha Cooper, Joseph Diversa, Frederick Martinuska, James Michella, Michael Pilgrim and Brian Ringelman. Part-time outside security officer 2024, 25 rate from $17.50 an hour to $18.50 an hour. That would be Jim Conway. Uniform security officer, starting salary from $33,334.92 to $35,000. We have Wendell Barnes. Salary prorated from $34,334.97 to $36,000. Jeffrey Lidle, salary prorated from $33,334.92 to $35,000. And Ayesha Cooper, as of 10/31/24, salary prorated from $33,334.92 to $35,000. School police officer, starting salary. Sorry, trying to scroll here. Am I scrolled too far? School, school police officer, starting salary from $42,000 to $48,000. This includes Greg McNeil from $48,844.86 to $51,844.86. Sean Riley from $46,731.57 to $49,731.57. Megan Morgan from $42,000 to $48,000. Director of Safety and Security and Head Security Guard, William Pepper from $85,478.51 to $88,478.51. Lastly, creation of a position, Assistant Director of Safety, Security Training Coordinator. Various buildings effective immediately, salary to be determined commensurate with experience. It's an exempt position. This position is being requested due to the need to have support and direction in the absence of the director. The position will have the added responsibility of organizing, scheduling, providing and maintaining records of the training provided to the department. Next, we have school psychologist adjustments. In order to align our tenured school psychologists with the starting salary for the same position, we have Marissa Wilson Croft from $89,478.36 to Lauren Lowe from $89,478.36 to $98,462.19. Finally, Kayla Mantini from $84,280.1 to $92,722.09. My eyes are burning. Lastly, we have a memory, memorandum of understanding. Administration recommends approval of the attached MOU between Altoona area school district and Altoona area Education Support Professionals Association, ESA slash NEA to include the position of sign language interpreter in the bargaining unit. So we have items not, or I'm sorry, eight. A through F, we are definitely carving out B for a roll call vote. We should do each of them as roll call?
You can carve B out, but they're all expenditures, monies and technically under 508, you should probably do, you could do B separately and do all the rest of them as roll call as well.
Okay, I appreciate your counsel. So that's what we'll do.
All right.
All right. So let's first address items eight A and then C through F. Seeking a motion to approve items A, C, D, E and F. Second, anyone?
Second.
All right. Anyone like to discuss any of these?
Just, just real quick, Billy, just a question, what's, what's the difference between a uniformed security officer and a school police officer? I'm just curious. I saw it and I, I really don't know, so.
Uniformed security officer does not have arrest powers? And a school police?
A uniformed security officer does not have the additional training that a school police officer has and they are not act 120 trained or certified by the state of Pennsylvania.
No, they're not act 120.
No, they are act 235, however, they're not act 120.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Now, I'd just like to say we're faced with what any other businesses faced, you know, my business and the healthcare business, we're faced with these challenges where the employment market is changing dramatically. In my lifetime, it's unparalleled. So I mean, we're finding it, you know, you sometimes have to make adjustments on the fly to, to maintain and retain good people. And that's sort of, that's sort of where we're at, so that's all I had to say about that. So that being.
I'd like to say something, sorry. I just wanted to, I guess, express in public that my concerns about the raises in the business office, I had previously spoken in exec on this, but I genuinely appreciate all our exceptional employees and I do feel like we have a lot of great employees that I'd like to commend. And, but recently I've been opposed to kind of, I, I would say cherry picking certain positions and giving them raises. It's not a reflection of what the individuals are capable of or their asset to our team. However, I feel uncomfortable making the decision to give certain people raises without myself reviewing all the positions in the department and, and feeling comfortable with who we're providing raises to and who we're not. So I just wanted to make that clear in public. I will be voting against letter C.
Thanks, Kelly.
You know, I just think that you know, we have, we have a reorganization of our business office and you have people that, you know, some may have been underpaid, say some may be, but who know, we have a reorganization of a business office and these people are, are being paid less than districts our size. And, and they've done an excellent job and we're saving money with the reorganization. So, and even with our police officers, these guys are all underpaid and we should, we should pay these guys a little bit more. But we only have so much, but the business office, I personally think that it's all warranted for the, for the proposal wages.
I, I agree that there are probably, they are probably warranted, but I don't feel comfortable that I've reviewed every position to make that decision.
There's, there's every, every phase of every department, I'm sure there's people that, that some people feel don't deserve a raise and some people feel they should. But who's to say this person does, this person doesn't. They all, they all have a jobs perform. And me, I'm, it's not up to me to see who performs. That's why we have a superintendent and a business manager. They relay to us who's performing their, 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 their jobs. So it's just a matter of who you believe or who you trust, and I trust my administration.
Okay, before we go on, just was alerted that under under personnel instructional section, we just had a rescission of a, of a position or an offer. So Ms. Nicole Tannehill has not accepted a job as a guidance counselor at the high school. So that would not be included in our vote here. So that being said, we're back to seeking your approval. Please signify by saying aye to accept items A, C, D, E and F with the one change I made under section A. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Is that, oh, that's, I'm sorry. That's a roll call. So can we, can we do a roll call on that? My apologies.
Mr. Mignon?
Yes.
Mr. Francis. Mrs. Erwin Adams.
Just opposed to C, please.
Mrs. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. McCauley.
Yes.
Mr. Romanowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Pacifico.
Yes.
Mr. Pappas.
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you, and thanks for keeping me straight. You know, I'm getting old. Dementia is setting in. Um, next we'll move on to the, the business manager, business manager contract, item B, under section eight. Um, looking for a motion to approve that, contract with Ms. Franks.
So moved.
Got a second. Would anyone like to discuss this contract? All in favor of approving? Oh, it's another rule call. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Camilla.
Mr. Mignon.
Yes.
Mr. Francis. Mrs. Erwin Adams.
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. McCauley.
Yes.
Mr. Romanowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Pacifico.
Yes.
Mr. Pappas.
Yes.
Okay. So if you guys want to. Congratulations, Sue. Yes.
Congratulations, Sue. And again, just want, want to thank Camilla for her professionalism and the transition process. I know she's going to remain with us through the end of December, but the institutional knowledge and the work ethic that she brings is infectious. Um, and I know that, that Sue, um, has learned a lot as we have from, from Camilla. So, we welcome Sue into her new role. Um, she's going to be fantastic and, uh, we hope that, that Camilla will spend the next two months, passing on all of her knowledge and all of her binders and all of her stacks.
She has to be a free agent.
But thank you very much. And, and, and Sue, we're very excited, um, to have you taking over in the department. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I exited myself out of, uh, my agenda and I got it right here. Don't, don't, don't remove me from office like, uh, like's going on in Washington. So we'll move on to business operations. We have item A, Amtram drivers, administration requests approval of the following Amtram bus drivers for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Contingent upon receipt of all required clearances and forms. That gentleman is Clayton Charles Knoll. Item B, capital RX pharmacy benefit manager contract renewal. Um, administration requests and recommends approval of the third amendment to the pharmacy benefit management services agreement with capital RX. The term of the agreement is from July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Um, C, uh, we have a list of repository bids, uh, right, um, I'm not going to go through all those. Under D, capital reserve list of payments, um, asking us to approve those payments. And that is it. So, um, seeking a motion to approve items A through D, under section nine. I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second. Thank you. Would anybody like to discuss any of these items? Sue, the, um, capital RX, they wouldn't do anything less than three years, or is that? So we'll, that contract will coincide with the next, teacher's contract. Okay. Teachers and asks me. There's a year in between. Okay. Anybody else? And I've read it. It's a, it's a complicated agreement, a lot of twists and turns. All in favor? Uh, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to item, ten, or, uh, section ten, new business. We have under A, election of PSBA twenty twenty-five leadership positions. Each, each member entity will have one vote for each officer. This will require boards of the various school entities like us to come, come to a consensus on each candidate and cast their vote electronically during the open voting period, uh, which concludes at the end of this week. Voting will be accomplished through a se- secure third party, web-based voting site that will require a password login. The board secretary will be authorized as the official person to register the vote on behalf of the Altoona area school district board of directors. And they have a list of, uh, directors. They provided us all with videos where these candidates had the opportunity to, share their, uh, background and wisdom with us. But there's no, really no choice, right? There's.
There's only one candidate for each position. So.
It seems pretty. This is like communism here.
La- last year, there were multiple candidates in some of the positions and we had, tabled it, you know, add a request for more information on the candidates so we can make an informed decision. Um, this year there is one candidate per office.
Can we write in Mr. Pappas? Okay. Okay. So you, uh, well, the list is there. If, if you took the time, uh, Sabrina Bracker from the Franklin area school district, uh, is running for the president-elect, one year, these are all one-year terms, I believe. Uh, Matt Vanoy from the Sharon city school district, I was running for vice president. Holly Arnold from, Tonka Hanock is running for, um, the eastern zone representative. That's a three-year term. Sorry. Uh, Christie Bolt, from the Northwestern school district is running for the western zone representative. That's a two-year term. And David Heine is running for the section E two advisor. Um, that's a two-year term. Uh, we also have, member entities are also asked to vote for open trustee positions on the PSBA insurance board. PSB insurance provides complimentary travel, accident insurance to all school directors from member school entities while on official school board business. We've all received this mail, whether you remember it or not. Um, as such, all member entities are considered participants in PSBA insurance programs and are eligible to vote. The, this, these are for trustees for the term to end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. There are three candidates for a three-year term and there's only three choices. Also, we have the school board secretary's forum. Only school board secretaries may nominate and vote for the forum officers. So there's a couple candidate, well, two, two individuals again for a two-year term. Betsy Gates from Dolphin County and Mary Dougherty from Montgomery County. So is that just, Camilla can vote for that, I believe. Um, and that's it for, ten. So we have to, uh, can I have a motion to, uh, uh, approve this list of candidates? For election?
So moved.
I have a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, next we have, uh, under eleven, committee reports. Do any of our committee chairs have a report? Okay, seeing none, I will move on. Uh, board president's report. I, I don't, I've spoken off tonight and not performed too well. Um, next, C, student representatives report.
Good evening. We just wrapped up our first marking period and it was very successful. Starting in late September, senior mentors went, went around to freshman homerooms during their leader and me period. Last Wednesday, the senior advisory committee had their first meeting where they discussed the objectives of having senior mentors, topics they should discuss with freshmen and how to foster a more positive school environment. During October second through the sixth, we had a fun and safe homecoming week. During homecoming week, charity cans were on display during lunchtime and games night. Proceeds benefited the Special Olympics. Last Tuesday, October fourteenth, the student council alongside the Red Cross collected thirty-one units of blood and welcomed twenty-one new donors. A presentation about Rachel's closet's challenge, uh, came to the high school on Wednesday, the sixteenth. Students attended throughout the day and roughly thirty people attended the, uh, evening community event. The presentation focused on Rachel Joy Scott's life. She was the first victim of the Columbine massacre and her ambition to spread kindness inspired the creation of Friends of Rachel's Club. On Tuesday, October seventeenth, the Black Student Union traveled to Pittsburgh to partake in a college fair that showcased approximately thirty historically black colleges and universities. In lieu of the disastrous Hurricane Helene that swept through North Carolina, the Patriotic Student Alliance run by Mr. Tom Fox held a hats for hurricane day on Friday, October eighteenth. For one dollar, students and faculty were able to wear a hat to school. The money was raised was given directly to the McCo- m- sorry, I always mess up how to say this. I practiced, I promise. McCombey County School District in North Carolina. Sorry about that. This week is red ribbon week where students will show their intolerance for drugs in our community and schools by participating in themes laid out by guidance counselor, Ms. Amanda Prosser, in conjunction with the Students Against Destructive Decision Club advisor, Ms. Megan Yingling. This false, the false sports season is nearly over. Uh, so winter sports physicals will happen next, uh, November seventh at three PM for junior high students and on November fourteenth at three PM for high school students. Um, and then in anticipation of the presidential election, the youth and government club run by Mr. John Blau has organized a mock election and created a Google site to educate students on the candidates and American government. The club is also requesting speakers involved in local government to come in and speak to the club. Thank you. And I'm sorry that I can't speak tonight. I don't know what's up with that.
It's not easy, is it Gracie, huh?
No, it's not.
You still did better than me. Thank you. Next, um, Mr. Hatch.
Just very briefly, and I think Gracie, you must steal my notes before you come out here, but you, you just want to commend our students and our staff. Um, a couple of the events, you mentioned the Rachel's challenge, uh, speaker, and they had the community event last Wednesday evening. Very powerful, very emotional and just, they, they couldn't be more complimentary of the students and the leaders that we are developing here in the Altoona area school district. I know that, that the speaker is one of their foremost speakers and she had nothing but amazing things to say about what our students have initiated along with our staff and faculty and member sponsors here at the Altoona area school district. Um, so I want to commend our student body and the group of student leaders that we're developing here in the school district. And also just in, in getting around the school district and looking at all of the different activities and events that are ongoing. Um, we're very fortunate to have such an amazing staff and student body with all of the initiatives that are being put forth by our kids and, and our community and our parents. Um, it, it is an honor to be a part of the school district. So Gracie, thank you to the students.
Okay, thanks Brad. Um, next, under item twelve, we had for our information only, we had a list of, um, uh, college credits that we were reimbursing our staff for. We'll move on to item thirteen, other comments. Do we have anybody from the employee union, any employee unions to respond to us? No? Anybody from middle management? No? Mr. Solicitor?
No report tonight.
And we pay you for that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right. That being said, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, anyone? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.